Report in progress. There was one I did not, oh, Livy happens for you. Yeah, I saved it for you.
I'm gonna take another little handful for dessert. Thanks, Andrew. How you been? How's your?
Let's get started. Welcome to this work session. This is a work session for the trustees of the Buena Vista, as well as the members of the Buena Vista School Board. And it is August 12th, 2025, and the time is six o'clock. So we can start with introductions. And Brian, why don't you start?
Yeah, Brian Berger.
I'm Lisi, the superintendent for the school district.
No matter, board member.
Brett Mitchell, Buena Vista School Board Member.
Maggie Hike, Board of Trustees for Buena Vista.
Mika Rosenhour, Board of Trustees.
Hey, we have a mayor.
Devin Rowe, Mayor of Tempe.
Andrew Rice, Trustee.
Jessica Kreis, Buena Vista School Board.
Lynn Montoya, School Board Member.
Thank you all for coming. Yeah, we can introduce the audience as well. But I appreciate everybody coming. This should be an interesting cooperative effort. We, you know, we haven't really gotten together, the two boards.
We have one attendee on.
Oh, okay. Chris, oh, Chris' arm is online. Okay. So we don't see anybody's here. Um, how about the?
There he is.
There's Chris.
Just turn them over, they're trustee.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I'm not there in person.
Where are you, Chris?
I am in Asheville, North Carolina, talking to a bunch of professionals about recovering from their hurricane last fall.
Yeah. Marika is our planning director. Yeah, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Joel Benson.
Is that your daughter? What's your name? Glad you're here. Great. Yeah, we appreciate the press coverage that you all give us. So people know, you probably know greatly all about what goes on.
You have one more in the way back.
Yeah, way back there. Thanks, Ed. So Chief, I think that you're gonna be first up here to talk about law enforcement with the SRO.
Yes. Can everyone hear me all right? So we got both sides of the room here, so I'll try to address everybody. But we have been partnering with the school district for several years now. A while back, Megan DiGeralimo, now Mitchell, she helped us start the School Resource Officer Program. And for several years, we had a dedicated School Resource Officer to the school district. And in the last few years, you know, we've had some really great discussions with the school board and with Lisa Yates and some others about changing that dynamic. Because we are a small town, we do have limited resources for officers. So sometimes the SRO was maybe underutilized, where we had calls and things in town and on the streets where we could have used that resource. So I think it was about two or three years ago, Lisa came to me. And we, it was mostly her idea, but kind of an idea of reimagining the program where we could utilize the officer on the street more. But he would kind of coordinate with all the officers where each of them had kind of ownership of School Resource Officer duties. So I worked with one of my buddies who runs the SRO program in Douglas County. And he said a lot of smaller agencies around the state do a similar model. So if you look at that first slide there, that's Megan holding up the sign, "First Day of School." She's just a baby there. She became a cop. You can't be a cop in Colorado till you're 21, so her first day as a cop was her 21st birthday. So I think she's about maybe 22 there, so just a baby. If you scroll down to the next slide there, we have a mapping program with our report writing software. And that is just the calls for service we had from roughly August through May of 2024 and into 2025. And it's kind of hard to see, but that little number 19 on, or 18 there on South Railroad, that's the high school. So we have a lot of calls at the high school throughout the day. And they actually account for, I think the numbers last year was roughly about 20% of our calls during a day shift were at the school. So it does keep us pretty busy. You can see the stats at the bottom of my report there where it says 342 calls for service at BVHS, and then we had 18 case reports this last school year. If you look at those calls for service, that's whenever an officer calls out at the school. So sometimes it is for a case report or something potentially dangerous. We get a lot of calls for child custody disputes, suspicious activity. There's calls related to vaping, things like that. But also, part of the law enforcement school partnership is that our officers are doing security checks. So just like, you know, at bigger police agencies when officers have to walk a beat, probably the most populated neighborhood in town during the school year is the school. So our officers usually, what'd you say, probably three to four times a day are walking through all the schools, unless we have other calls. One of the really good things about the school is they're a secured campus, which means when school's in session, the doors are locked. So if somebody that was maybe a threat to the school wanted to come to the school, they're gonna meet with a locked door, and that's gonna give the school time to get law enforcement in route to engage that person. So again, that's really a good thing that Lisa Yates has helped implement. And with the new building, that was something that the school was able to really address, is making sure that the campus is more secure. If you want to go to the next slide, this is just some of the things we've done throughout the years. And the students that are shown here, all their parents and things have sent waivers to allow us to show their pictures. But that's Megan working with the special needs class. And they get to come out and play with some of the things in the patrol car. The SWAT team came out last year and all the little kids at the Grove Preschool got to play with the equipment and look at all the things. Commander Garcia's there with some kids who came over and we do a presentation with the little kids called "What's on My Belt", where we can explain, you know, hey, this is our baton, this is our handcuffs and things like that. Next slide. We do a lot of things. Fraser here, I'm gonna have him talk in just a minute, and we'll be super brief. But he's taking over the Law Enforcement School Partnership Coordinator, which means it's gonna be his job to make sure we're meeting the agreement and the contract that you guys are gonna be looking at tonight. And that involves, you know, making sure we're, I think, about five events per month that we're helping the school with, whether it's going to certain football games, basketball games. Sometimes they're contentious, sometimes when we play and beat the Spartans, people get a little grumpy, so sometimes it's good to have officers there. Those are some trainings we do. The one with the lady with blonde hair teaching, that was the I Love You Guys Foundation, who developed the Standard Response Protocol, and they came and hosted a training a few years ago. The other class there with Mr. Campton, that's one of the crime scene forensics classes, so we help them with that. So Fraser's gonna be going to what's called the National Association of School Resource Council. It's a week-long school to get him certified for this type of thing. And part of their model is a triad of the School Resource Officer acting as a mentor to students, acting as an educator. That's an example. Sometimes we go in and we help teach classes with the teacher in there, under their direction, and sometimes we have to act as law enforcement. So he'll be learning about that, and this is a part of that model. If you want to go to the next slide. Some other things we help with are back-to-school night. And let's see, that's next Wednesday or Tuesday, next Tuesday night. So we always set up a table. We have a lot of resources. I know the school and the police department do a lot of messaging on the Standard Response Protocol, which is super critical for, if there's a threat outside the school, what's the response? If there's a threat inside the school, what's the response? And there's other things that can happen, medical issues, hazardous material on issue, and the protocol addresses that, but it's super important that we train the staff on it and vice versa. And the school has always been really great training with us on those things. But another part of it that we struggled with is getting messaging to the parents. I think a lot of people watch TV and they hear about, you know, active shooters and things like that, and they have a sense of like, oh, we're supposed to go into lockdown or do this or that. And the protocol addresses that, but it has things that are below a lockdown, which is like the highest level of threat. If you want to scroll to the next couple slides to the Standard Response Protocol slide, one of them is secure. That's for a threat outside the building. That could be something as simple as a mountain lion, which we've had to do, do a secure for a mountain lion and a bear. It could be maybe the police are making a felony arrest in the area. It could be somebody escaped from the prison. So that's business as usual inside, but there's, the entire exterior is locked. Usually you see an increased police presence. So we've had people that have confused when we put the school on lock or on secure, and they think, oh geez, it's on a lockdown, what's going on? And there's a sense of panic, like there's a shooter in the school. So we do try to educate parents and the community on some of the differences there, which is important to understand. Do you want to go to the slide right before that one, Brian? Some of the other things we do with the school. We do a lot of parades, and we go, the BV demons are excellent in athletics, and we've taken the soccer team. When they get to go to state, we usually do a police escort through town for them, which is super fun for us and them. We do the Bike to School Day, which is fun, the Halloween Parade, which is coming up, that's a big one. The Homecoming Parade is another big one, it's a lot of fun where they have their floats and things. If you want to do the next couple slides, and if you want to maybe talk about some of the trainings we do.
Yeah.
Before you get into that, if you want to just introduce yourself and your background, if you guys might detect from his accent that he's not from Buena Vista.
Yeah, so those that don't know me, my name's Fraser, last of Pomfret. I'm from the UK. Originally born in England, I was raised in Scotland on the southwest coast. I was a police officer in Scotland. I moved out here to Colorado in 2021 and started out at Summit County Sheriff's Office and then moved to Buena Vista where I'm from. I was the K9 handler before, who recently got retired. And then now this role that's come up is the role that I'm passionate about getting. Yeah, as for like the trainings that we do in the school, and it starts with the Standard Response Protocol. We want to try and educate ourselves, our staff, our officers, but as well as the staff members of the school what to do. If we have an incident, we want to make sure that we're prepared. We don't want to be on the news for the wrong things on both ends of it. School didn't do the job, the PD didn't do the job. The training on that, like for example, this week and next week, we're going into the school with staff before the school goes into session. And we're gonna go through the Standard Response Protocol. We're gonna discuss it, there'll be questions, verbal scenarios of like, hey, if this happens, what should we do? We want to make sure that everyone is confident going into the school year and beyond, what to do in case it goes wrong. From there, we have active killer response. Basically, we train to be prepared, and we want to be prepared. When that situation happens, we want to make sure that all of our officers know what they're doing. We'll go in on breaks. We never train with, with our, you know, our firearms or whatnot when kids are in the schools. They're always downloaded, and we always make sure that training space is safe. But we want to make sure, number one, we know the layout of the school. We know what our response is gonna be, and we're gonna train to be successful in entering that school and dealing with whatever situations come to us. So over Christmas break, when everyone's enjoying, you know, their breaks and whatnot, we're in there with the schools, we're going with Sergeant Mitchell, who was obviously a big part of the school program before this. And same with Chief Morgan, who's had a lot of experience in his career with incidents in schools. We're training for that success, you know, to be successful. So the scenarios that get put in front of us, you know, they test us as officers, but they made us better because we want to be sharp and ready. Or when that situation happens, and I hate to say when, but we have to act like it could happen. So from there, other trainings that we do, we assist with drills. So over the course of last year and the years before, we will practice, you know, secure drills in the school, lockdown drills in the school. And I understand for kids that are in there, they, you know, they get told that they're doing drill. But even in that, that's a great little bit of adrenaline. But we're there to make sure that we're doing things the right way and prepared for when that happens. And the staff are great with us, the school works well with us. And we're pretty, you know, we're pretty tight and close on how we go around those trainings. Last year, we had an exercise, talked about the reunification process with buses came and where the reunification point, that's a big part of what happens in the major, it's the post wants to see. We have to make sure that we are all prepared and know what we're doing. Because if not, that is where we can let ourselves down. We have to be dialed in on every little thing we do. So that's a lot of the stuff that we do. I feel very honored and privileged to be in this position. I'm excited to be a part of the whole school process. It's a thing for me is learning development as well with juveniles and being in close contact with them. And trying to form a relationship too, where we're not just seen as the big black police officers, we're seen as a person and someone that can relate with these kids to help them. The exercises that we do, yes, they may seem scary to people that don't know. However, we want the schools to be safe. We want the kids to be able to go to school and just enjoy themselves, to be kids. Unfortunately, you know, where we are in society, things do go wrong. And we, as police officers and first responders, we have to be ready for that moment. That's pretty much everything I've got to say.
Well, that's about it. I just want to make sure we have time in case anybody has any questions for us. Couple of the other slides, we do the every 15-minute program, which is some DUI education. Some of you probably heard there was actually lockdown in the Lake County schools yesterday because somebody got shot, a former student. So again, it hits close to home, and we try to be very careful and train the right way on those things. And this year, as you go into the school, we coordinated with Lisa. And this is something we learned from the National School Resource Officer Program when other officers have gone and Salida implemented it. But as you go into some hallways, you'll see it's color-coded now where it's like a red square or a green square or something like that. So if Salida Police or State Patrol runs into the school, maybe they're first on scene before we get there, and they're not sure where to go. Dispatch has maps now where they can say, you know, we got, report the shooters in the green hallway. So all a first responder has to do is glance up, find the paint scheme, because Dispatch is gonna have it on their maps, and they can move fast towards any threat. So as you go into the school, you'll kind of notice that this year, and that's something that we're really happy the school is partnering with us on some of these safety programs. That's all we've got, and we're happy to take any questions, and thank you for your time and service.
Please, many questions. I had one. I was just wondering whether you have had occasion to arrest students. How do you handle that?
Yeah, so juvenile arrests are a pretty specific thing in Colorado. It's very rare, Buena Vista thankfully, that we have to arrest kids at all. Usually we can do what's called a direct filing, where it's almost like a ticket, and it's like, hey, mom and dad asked to sign it, and you have to show up at court. There have been some instances, and I don't think we had any last year, maybe one, where we've actually had to arrest them. And when we do, there's a screening process we have to go through by law, where a juvenile screener asks them all these questions about suicidal ideation, substance abuse, abuse in the home. And if it's a violent crime with weapons, then a judge has to review it. If they do get arrested, the judge lets us know, and they usually have to go down to Pueblo or Youth Corrections. I've been here since 2010, I would say maybe five to six times has that happened. Usually they screened, screened to what's called home detention. But we tried to avoid that if at all possible.
Do you have a say, do you have a say as to whether they can go into the full circle Restorative Justice Program?
We do, depending on the crime, if it's a crime against another person, that's gonna be up to the district attorney and the victim of that crime. If it's something minor, like things like vaping or other things like that, often we don't even have to file it with the courts, we can file it if we'd like directly with Restorative Justice. And that can provide them things like, for traffic things, they have to take, I'm classic, it's called a Lita 25 on the, you know, dangers of driving or substance abuse. It's vaping, it's things like, you know, learning about substance abuse, the dangers of nicotine addiction or alcohol addiction and things like that. That's definitely an option, and we usually coordinate that with the district attorney. Good question.
Any other questions?
It's not a question, but I have a comment. I really appreciate the fact I don't have dedicated SRO officer anymore, and more than one officer can fill that position because kids with their multiple personalities that would relate to one person better than I do.
Yeah, I like it. And also, there's some schools in the city that have a pretty big campus. Think about like where the police department is, where the high school is, we're really far anyways. We get called to the elementary school on occasion too, and a lot of America's Most Wanted. But we do walkthroughs. It's our favorite, actually, to walk through the elementary, with all the little kids. You know, they still like the police, so they come, they talk to us, and they want a sticker or whatever, so we enjoy that.
That's great. Well, thank you very much for the, my question.
Yeah, so a good follow-up to that is the agreement is included in the pack, that's been needed for coordinating this joint meeting. It is a work session, I'm looking for any type of vote, but it's an opportunity for both sides to see the agreement at the same time. You can see there's minimal red line on it. The big thing that triggered it, looking at page six of the agreement, was that it's written in a way that basically looks good for a one-year term. So we wanted to make sure it remained active, and it's written now in a way that goes into perpetuity. So it's an opportunity if there's any questions from either side, ask those. The second component is the paragraph more on page two of the agreement, and please take and speak to that.
Well, first of all, we too are very thankful for this agreement and the way that it operates. I just think it's, it works well for the reasons that you said, that our students are seeing multiple officers. But as well, there's no prediction of when an officer will be in the building, and we think that that randomized for someone who might be doing something that we, that would not be safe for our students. But with, with that, we also very much support that the school district is contributing to this. Not all arrangements.
Push versus push.
Not all school. Not all schools and towns. So the district's contribution to this partnership, I think is important. We talked about that, you and I, I talked to Alex there. It's important for the district to invest in the officers. And while we know that it's not covering the full officer, we're also not taking resources anymore. And then something that is special about this agreement is that we also offer reduced or, as they are staff, on our staff, access to our preschool, which if you don't have preschoolers, that's a high requirement. So have access to it, and then also best gap rate if you can do it in preschool. So cash as well as that benefit, which honestly, it is a piece of why we're in higher, so let me get higher because we got that. I'm fancy enough about working relationship that we have. And I do emphasize that picture where you saw an officer in our hallways, we think like that students are not available. And that is often a thing that gets happened, that our kids are watching the officer.
Great. Thank you. So Lisa, you are still on duty here with the initiative. The bond, the bond extension, and, Bill, what are your question? That's the next thing on our agenda.
What I'm gonna share with you, you had slides and had a date and information change in the packet, but I'm gonna send it around to everyone. And last night, our Board of Education did cast a motion, so these are official questions that will be on our November ballot. One is a bond, which will be a no tax increase, it's an extension of debt that we have. We're racking up debt that we will pay off, but I don't know when we're racking that, and increase this debt we have. It's $3.9 million debt, and the way that they directed it, it's for our back. As you know, bonds can be for capital needs, and we listed what some of those are on information. We have more information on our website so that voters know what the question is. That is a tax base, and it is specific for our staff's teacher salaries. There's information on your, on the on the first page, we can see the amount of funding that comes locally for our school district. So you can see how that has changed over time, 2022, for this past year, 2024. The red represents what our local taxpayers contribute to our local funding in the district. The black space, the gray space is our federal funding, and then the black is state budget. So a couple of things in there, one, you can see our federal and for that reason, as we've had people asking us how is this impacting the teams at the federal level? Even for the recent the impact is not something into the district. I have been attending the calls with others. Here are other facts, but with school district, it's not significant. But you do notice that the red's expanding, local is expanding. The asset is happening, the black is shrinking. And that is what most, we're, most of our taxpayers don't know. Because we get the question of, my taxes are going up, and I know the mills for the schools are high, so why do you need funding? Well, the way school funding in Colorado works, as we see more locally, the state doesn't back well to the district. So our funding stays the same, it's just where our money is distributed. So the tool that we have in Colorado for districts is to override. And what that's doing is bringing more local control over our funding. I think we made it right, and that's what this one is. A debt-free override, which is a newer tool that Colorado is what we're using. This allows us to not be Um, this allows us to not be taxed at thirty percent on the open price, so that we can always plan for that. The ninety or seventy-five thousand. Um, the board set their, um, goal on this nine seventy-five. Because we know that that would have changed us having a starting salary for teachers at fifty thousand. Currently they're forty-two thousand. Um, to date, we have high retention rates. Um, we have a number of supporting in some of our, um, veteran teachers because this board also, um, rests a lot in our salary schedules. And we have had teachers that were set to retire who have stayed with us. They're not going to be here forever and we have quite a few staff that in the next five years will rightly be retiring. So we are going to be in. Prudent ways for our district and recruiting people from out of our community that don't have housing care, forty-two thousand. Um, that, that's not a match and so they set their goal on fifty thousand. And it will still be part of any conversation that the town has on housing, but that's, that's what set this in motion was how can we ensure that our teachers. Um, that starting rate is also placed over. Um, that will have what we, that has been a little bit aged, the J K family, local age. And we do have some of our staff that are not at that and that's what this tax. Uh, so we have on this, uh, the people are saying favor. And that's this, know that it's not an easy ask ever to ask for. Uh, but we also know that there's a strategic time to do that. This bond that we have will expire in twenty twenty-two, so we have a short window when this can be an extension without any student or passengers. The lucky, um, it's a strategic move that this is, this is not a crisis situation for this board. They're coming at a time to say we haven't planned this for fifteen years. Um, and the time is now when we care to, um, help our teachers stay here. The information is there and of course the, the board that is here is happy to ask the answer the question.
So in simplistic terms, would you say that, um, the mill levy will increase the size of the pie?
Pretty crazy, exactly, that's. The graphic cap that the state, that our state legislators set, this is the amount that we're gonna step. Is it different enough for Zoya? Is it different enough for Rocky Ford? Um, and factors like, um, like graphics of your monthly is what sets that cap. And then the multiplier is your. But yes, for us to achieve that, the government state, that would be good. And that's what we're writing for this one, I guess.
Great, thank you. Uh, other questions? Questions for board members even? Do the board members want to comment? You're allowed to talk about this.
Um, I mean, Lisa covers it so well, but yeah, I. I would say this, setting that fifty thousand goal of salaries, very important to this board and, and that's why we're bringing it now. Get the, get the wages up for the staff.
So I do have a question, if, if the mill levy passes, how quickly will that fifty thousand dollar a year salary be able to start?
All that they've said is twenty-two percent. So, no, they will, they will have the decision of our salary schedule to be all the way to fifty thousand in twenty-two.
What's the plan if it doesn't pass for retention and, uh, uh, paying teachers? Is there a plan?
There is, um, we've, we reached out and we've set it in our goals to be at that rate by that age.
Regardless.
So if we can't, if we don't get this passed, then we have to make very difficult decisions, uh, putting back classes. If we have to, um, for teachers, that, making class sizes bigger. And there's a lot of, a lot of ways we can do minor adjustments to try to break these numbers up, but that's, that's a short-term fix. And that was one thing I was gonna mention. Just was talking to, if we get this done, this is a continuing ongoing payment to the school. So that we can have that money going and it's not actually in the mill, it's not actually going to teachers. It's going to make or what is it, to cooperation fund. And because we're not paying for those funds out of our general fund, that money goes to the teachers. So it's, it's offset, but it's going to be a permanent offset.
Thanks.
I did mention here, that's on our information on our website, that this being a fifteen-year plan, the things that the board was able to do, including. Even the forty-two, um, that we had and we create our milestone bonuses that stay with the, um, town forever, um, until they retire. Those things they were able to do, they took what we had in the past and using seventy-nine percent of our general fund budget for payroll. That's now eighty-five percent. So we did the adjusting already in our total general fund budget, it's just general operations to payroll. So we're left with fifteen percent that we're operating on, that's not going to payroll. So when, when Brett just mentioned, what are we gonna do if we don't, if we achieve the goal of fifty thousand? We've done the tweaking on, in different operational purposes, so we are looking at, we have to go to payroll. And payroll then we can, we'll have five, um, producing programs. So that's where we are, when we're already setting eighty-five percent, well, there's no, there's no large, um, operation.
Would your, uh. Revenue, let's say, would your revenue go up if you could attract more of the students back into our school?
Um, yes, I know, but our, our issue has not been attracting back to public school. So we have seen families that are choosing some of the alternatives, we have, you know, we always have. Um, we have seen a few families go to homeschool that were not previously. Um, so what we have seen is here, and I think, I think you were in a meeting with the rest of school, oh, on this. So our town is growing, it has been, that our enrollment has stabilized over the last five years. We've seen it decline in the last two years, um, that is no different than I would say if you look at, you looked at, um, you, this school district over the last thirty or forty years. You'll see just by birth rate, some of the up and downs, um, and those are part of the rest of the district, um, to just kind of manage those ups and downs. Especially small school districts. What the state does is they allow to average over a few years your enrollment. If you were, if you were following the governor this, this last year, that was one of his ways of, um, of trying to balance their, their budget versus stop that averaging. Uh, they reduced it so we can only average our, our, our enrollments over four years, that's like we reduce. So we have to be ready to flex when we have low enrollment. Our senior class last year was forty-two, very small class and that impacts your whole overall budget. So I, I think my call was up in a, in a town conversation is we really need to focus on being team, that's the, we're, we're, we're families. Want to live, not for it, we'll fund you alone, but it's, it's, that's why, that's what makes this a beautiful place. And as we're balancing how we're seeing growth resort-wise, there, you know, I think that's our new name, right, rural, rural resorts. But we also need to be looking at what's making this a place where people are moving here with children. That's where our declines come, it's really, it's simple, you know, the thing, it wasn't.
Thank you. Other questions, please, on the board?
I don't want to come off sounding negative. Um, because we have a wonderful school district and we need, we need a good place for our kids. In the past, we had a mill levy increase that was passed and it was for wages. Do you perceive having to do this ever so many years to be able to keep up, to be able to pay? Um, decent wages for teachers?
That's, that's why, that's. You're, you're so, I'm telling Colorado spends their dollars, um, I mean, you know that, that's, that's where the school is at. Public schools take the largest percentage of our financing as long as they are struggling, um. We are left to solve this problem locally, so I think it's, I'm predicting if we can invest more at the state level. In, in public schools that I'm not sure that we're, we're so horrible.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. We, uh. I'm gonna talk about our comprehensive plan.
Bill's gonna be my Vanna White.
Bye. No purpose. Where's the heels?
All right, good evening, Board of Trustees, School Board of Education. My name is Marika Cupp, I'm the Planning Director for Town and it is my pleasure to be here with you this evening. I'm gonna provide a quick update on where things stand with the Comprehensive Plan, providing a focused presentation on how we involve education and youth-focused engagement throughout this process. So we'll go through the, uh, Comprehensive Plan process and I won't go through every single detail within this timeline. Um, I know Lisa was able to join us last week at Planning and Zoning Commission, as I did go through that. Um, and got a little bit emotional because I think, uh, a ton of work has gone into this process. Um, I'm super humbled, super appreciative that we've got a community that is engaged and, and wants to be engaged and shows up. And shows up proud and is really focused on protecting what makes Univista of Univista and how do we grow? In a way that makes sense for our community in the next ten years and that's really the objective of this. Um, was our youth-focused engagement, um, we've called out this school a number of times within the plan. And I've got the plan itself here, a printed version with every tab call out of the school, um, youth involvement. And then just education as relates to the, to the school district. Um, so anyone that's interested in looking specifically at school-focused initiatives within this plan, um, but you can see that there are a number of, of tabs. That are all color-coded here because I've got an amazing team in planning. Um, but really, I think to Lisa's point, um, you know, we know as our community has grown over the last five years. We've seen a huge spike in second homeownership and maybe what that's brought is a loss of a sense of community. Um, we really want our young people that grow up here to want to live here, if they leave to go to school, you want to come back here. You want to talk about what makes this community so special. And so really, a lot of this plan was focused on how do we preserve, like, like I said earlier, how do we preserve what makes BB BB? And I think a fundamental aspect of that is through our, through our kids and through our youth, um, and in our partnership with the school. So at a very high level, kind of looking at this detailed plan here, you can see that this process has been going on for several years. Being awarded, um, in twenty twenty-three, the town received a hundred thousand dollar grant to develop a comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is really to guide long-range planning decisions here in town. And so you can really break this whole timeline into five big buckets. The first bucket was our community engagement and visioning, where we got out and we talked to folks. And we asked them, what do you want to see for our community, what are your goals, what are your objectives, what are your concerns, what should be tackled in this plan? And then with that information, really doing an inventory and analysis of our existing conditions and sort of where do things stand today? We can understand the problems that we're trying to solve or how to forward our goals if we don't really look at where, um, things exist, uh, at the beginning of the plan. So a lot of effort was, uh, had, went into that portion of the process as well. And then we took a moment to go through an additional engagement, check in with folks, make sure that we were on the right track. Uh, before we released the community survey, um, over the last several months, we've had several revisions of the Comprehensive Plan development. Uh, or the Comprehensive Plan that have gone, uh, out to the public, to the board, to Planning Commission, to our steering committee for continued feedback. And then in the last thirty days, um, the planning team put in a very strong effort to get out and talk to folks. Um, boots on the ground, going to farmers markets, the youth, uh, summer kickoff event, um, concerts, the rodeo. Uh, just making sure again that we were meeting people where they were at and making sure that things were on track. There's just a high level of our, of the chapters within the plan, um, but as you can see from the tab document here, maybe it's a little bit hard to see from your seats. Um, the school exists across every chapter within this plan and so really I think. It's hard to break a comprehensive plan up into such specific chapters because there's so much interwoven connectiveness between each chapter. And I think you can see that in, in the place that our school and our youth take within our community, um, and so there's just a high level there. And then going into a more specific timeline, I just wanted to call out, really the school has been engaged and, and. When I say the school, I mean, members of the school board, Lisa Yates has been, has been extremely engaged, um, parents, uh, business owners that are also parents. We've really made a huge effort to get, uh, young folks involved in the last thirty days. We had a student on our steering committee as well as a school board member, um, that really helped guide how we establish our process and set goals throughout this process. And so really through this timeline, at every single touch point, um, we were making sure that we were talking to the school, to our peers, through our youth. Getting folks engaged. Um, I just wanted to call attention to some of the tab sections that I've got within the plan here, um, that. Uh, really have set specific goals with either the school in mind or in partnership with the school. Um, looking at our land use code, um, our land use action section, making sure that we support, uh, creation of tools, um, that are interactive for the public, including schools and educators. Um, again, I think we want to make sure that we're providing housing and development for our teachers and for our police officers and for our planners and. And making sure that as, as the cost of living goes up here, that, that doesn't force out our really fundamental workforce. Um, folks should be able to live where they work and enjoy where they live and so I think that's a big, big part of this plan with a focus on our educators. Some of the other goals that we've looked at and I won't go through all of these, but, um, we've highlighted the need for expansion of early. Childhood education facilities and licensed childcare providers, so again, really looking at that preschool level and seeing how the town can help those schools objective and supporting. Um, this type of service for our community, knowing that there's a very, very high demand right now. And then, um, goal number eight, they're advocating for the expansion of facility space for teens to perform outreach with schools and to turn. To determine which types of recreational spaces the communities teens are missing. So we've got a really great, um, selection of programming right now through our recreation department, but we recognize that there's. There's more that we can be doing for folks that are under the age of three and then for folks that are over the age of, of twelve, kind of beyond that pre-teen stage. So, um, really trying to focus in our efforts to help expand programming where appropriate. So I just really wanted to thank everyone for being engaged in this process, I don't think, I mean, I'm, I was really lucky, um, that I came on board when I did. So I joined the town here within the timeline, but obviously there was a, there was an immense amount of work that was done prior to my arrival and an immense amount of work that we did. Since January and sincerely, it would not have been possible without the continued engagement and feedback and holding us accountable. And I really challenge the folks here in this room and members of our community to continue to hold us accountable. Um, it will be really amazing once this plan is adopted, but the last thing it should do is just sit on a shelf. I think we have set goals and we need to make sure that we are, um, taking actionable steps to make sure that we're achieving these goals and adapting as we need to. This plan is really established for the next ten years, but we all know a lot can change very quickly. Um, and so checking in with one another, continuing our strong partnerships is, is really gonna be, um, super important to, to putting this into action. And then within your packet, I've provided the timeline. And then within your packet, I've provided the timeline here that Joel so graciously. For me, I just, I don't know, there's something about seven dollars that I. Makes it seem really impactful, but I think it is a credit to our community's work and, um, our community's involvement in this process. I think, yeah, I'm super, super proud. So if there are any questions for me, I would be happy to answer those now.
For so long, we've said, right till the comprehensive plan.
Here we are. They have on the graph.
Yeah.
Graphics.
Comments, questions? I'd like to.
Yeah, for real. Big comment.
So our.
Fabulous.
Um, so we're hoping with this already.
Way to go. You didn't even. For it.
Talking rings at the major school classroom, so. And wonderful things. As well. That was our word, that if we expand.
The second wonderful thing is we didn't ask for taxes.
Yeah. Thanks.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Now, I think this is Brian, are you gonna? You're please, please ask me, just look up, you're back up again. Um, something about the Sam's building.
Frank had talked a little bit about says. Building, this is, uh. Uh, specifically that it's in the community and, um, this school is often associated with helping young. For good reason. And so we wanted to make sure that as it has become public, that seems is. And eventually, at some point, selling, uh, property as well as the facility on the property. The school districts will interest in it as well as, um, our need for it. So our interest in. In continuing with it and our, and I think besides our need, our obligation to act, um, to make sure that that facility is preserved. Has come up a couple times. So I thought it would be important for all of us, our, um, our board hasn't even had a full update on it. That's on several of the board members, meeting with people that you think would hard to come and said, what do we need to do? How do we save this building? And then also the recurring question, oh. There's our community is not part of the tax district of Sam's. The school district is the one that we need to bring that valid initiative to people. Because we all receive the funding for it. That's the way the the CMC structure works. And so we're often the points of contact, the, um, people in the community about what's happening. So what you have in the packet is a bit of the background, um, and I'll give some highlights. And then I think it'd be good to open up any questions or discussion on this, but I think within here or so. The, um, likelihood that property just across the street looking for sale, um, is is pretty good. And so it's. It would be good for us to listen to the community to find out that there's a need, um, in the community for that. Um, so the building is currently leased by CMC to Colorado Alamoses. Um, the Bosse serves in for the Univista Police Department, Salida Park in Lake County. Um, Brett Mitchell is the president of the board of the Bosse, and so they operate out of that building. Um, and as you know, the, um, library fabric has been narrowed, but it's supporting some of this as well. There's also a CSU extension office. Um, what these costs is not sustainable by any means. Um, however, whoever is leasing from the CMC, the local government, doing exterior completely. Um, the land originally was donated by residents to the CMC foundation for the purpose of writing in college store area. And there are covenants existing around this donation and. And CMC was here, I don't know, anyone in the room that was able to be there when CMC came to, um, talk with the community about this very thing. So. And they also see these notes as well. I'll make one fraction in here that that I shared with you. The building was originally hyped used by our Department of Corrections for education courses with a kind of reorientation. But as well, our students to access their. Um, over time, the CMC left them to maintain this program in the parts of the facility. At that point is when CMC began internal question of, is this a sustainable facility for for us? Um, this is the question, or the statement. CMC is not a private entity. It's a public entity that's outside of the Colorado Public College organization, so it works separately from a lot of colleges. Um, in Colorado. It originated to provide access to malaparias, but courses were difficult to provide in person and in more remote locations like us. Um, and they are not receiving full public state funding like our other community colleges are. Colleges are, it's they operate as a special tax district. CMC bylaws operate such that the locals, district, and valid measure to the district voters were part of the special taxes. So just recently, point two, all school districts in the state of Colorado were assigned by the state. Who have a current, um, to a particular college, BB's assignment was to CMC. And we had to get our current enrollment courses through the CMC. That law is no longer on our books, so we are able to go to other colleges to get our. For our students to get permanent enrollment. It was always available to us for four-year college. But for two-year colleges, the service area model, um, and people put in place, if I looked at their business plan, it was. Sure that each public where it was placed would have a sustainable source of, um, enrollment. I think the advancement of online, uh, courses, that that's no longer necessary. So that's why we don't have the service area model. In twenty eighteen, uh, CMC approached our school district about the interest of purchasing or swapping the CMC building. Um, they found that the campus had to be placed and desired to have more of an in-street presence. That, um, so as a trial in twenty eighteen, our students were leased the building. We is. Same for the school. So that's our first attempt at extending preschool. So the leased building, nearly the same model. Very minimal lease, um, but the cost for maintaining that building and the construction there was significant investment. Um. And that's why, um. Well, it was our administrator and. Was not a big fan of preschool being in commercial area. And, um, again, this is on a trial area, a trial basis. And having lived out there for a time, we understand this question. There is a lot of commercial traffic in the industry out there during that winter preschool. Um, was one challenge, but even though it doesn't feel like it's far away, um, when your district or. When all of your buildings are on the other side of the highway, there were some issues that we had to get up there. Um, and just, and, um, we think we were working out a few buildings as well. So. Uh, having the director be in two places, the trial was not a great one for preschool. It may have worked to make a bull race up there and they were spanned, but, um, it was not a good fit for it. Um, that said, in eighteen nineteen, the Univista board needed to offer to CMC a purpose, the building for future master planning. We knew that we had facilities at that time. We were wondering about C, um, CHS. That was one of the conversations we originally had with CMC, with buildings, with CTHS, and CMC had a main street presence at that time. Um, the negotiations that were stopped with, first of all, the, we just could. They were looking at the original covenant that those BB donors had made, um, and what. That, um, for to make a law. And then we had twenty nineteen, this light school district, part of that district voters, part of our special, um, tax district. The BB school district does not catch up to that valid measurement time. And if you, however, the timing, we had just come through our voters to build a little school of high school. Um, so the timing for us to try and hop on that twenty nineteen, um, ballot was just not the right time for our community. Um, and it would not have been the right time for Salida to wait two years, which is what our request was. At the time, you could only go to CMC in the Congress. But they would have to wait two years. Um, I think, uh, everyone agrees for us to have bonds and carry together. Um, that it just didn't work that way, but that would have had a different outcome for all of us talking about CMC. Um, so after that successful, um, Salida measure, CMC, understandably, all of its operations, Salida, that's where their tax, that dollars were coming. With the preparation there. Because we, the BB school district is now, this gets, service area, they don't get the same tuition rate that a service area does. Uh, or tax district does, no longer service area tax. So for our students who are taking rural, current enrollment, they're taking high school class into college credit. They were needing to pay, uh, uh, as if we lived in the prep range. Um, since we weren't part of the tax, um, district, and that was possibly the district where a hundred thousand dollars. So we started looking at other options that would increase that cost, and we would, we would. Colleges, Western University primarily, um, where our costs increased, like last year, it was less than two thousand dollars. That's because they're getting two percent from the state that CMC doesn't have access because they're on this special tax district. So. CMC is doing everything above the board. It's just not in their tax district to have access to this. Benefits. Um, so the great thing is our students still have full access to college, um, courses. They still take CMC courses when they, when we, when those courses are available at Western or now Adam State as well. Um, most of CMC courses are online, so we, we try to make as much in person for our students. Um, so the courses online, courses and tickets, but it has higher costs. So what we take support for the community is we have met our students. Um, access to higher education, and we're doing that at a much lower cost. If the community, if the town of Univista says, would you prefer the, um, CMC tax district? It would be important for us to start knowing and understanding since we would be the ones that found the ballot, what are those needs? That CMC would fulfill for our community that are unmet, that, um, that a local public college could fill. Um, I have conversations with the CMC Vice President, my parents, who's over in the heart area. I've talked with the EDC, uh, this, um, the chair has come to ask us about. The desire to have CMC in front of our tax district. And my encouragement has been, let's, let's find out what all the needs are that higher education of our people could build. But we can't assume that it's the school district that would be the driver in a need. Will be a driver in, in our community, but as far as indeed, our kids have the same access to, um, higher education that someone else that is in the tax district. So we wanted to cut background to if this, which comes up more as the facility becomes, if it becomes available. Um, we've already been in conversation about not Bosse's because they have been put on notice that maybe they may not have a place to. Um, locate, and so we're good partners with Bosse's as well. So that's the background of, of where we have been.
What a background. Um, two questions. I looked at the Bosse's. I don't really understand what they do. Would love a little background from you. And then, you know, what would you be hoping to do with the building? I think in the short term, if you were to do some time exchange.
Yeah, I can talk about the Bosse's.
Thank you.
Bosse's is basically. A cooperative of the four schools, districts have gotten together and they put together the Bosse's. Bosse's provides, currently, they're providing swap coordinators to the schools. And we also provide pass-through for several of the federal funding sources that can be brought in. Through the Bosse's. The school districts. A lot of special. Or the schools. And Bosse's basically helps to provide services to a four district area. That a single district, especially like Fair Play or County, they don't have the funding to have. Some of the people that fly through the Bosse's. And because of that, break awesome, have access to all the different.
This point, having lived with the rest of our facilities across the country, as far as protection, but we, but we, yeah, we have. Exclusion versus CHS being on our current campus. So I think, I don't think that CMC, that CHS is further away. From everything else that's happening in the district, although that's the best that we will cover. One thing that has come to mind more recently, um, I think most of the people who are coming to us saying, we need to save this building. Very interested in what trades education do in our community. Um, we have a very strong woods and metal program. We have one of the best, um, facilities for that. In fact, we could rebuild it using grant dollars in the same way. It, it's just that state of the art, um, and and well-used. And our enrollment, if you start, if you start creating new trains, we don't have the enrollment to sustain a train. And I think that's an important conversation to have, even with CMC, because they are experiencing some of those challenges. In in smaller communities where the community is interested in opening up trades, but as soon as we start specializing. You just don't have the population to do that. One thing we don't offer in our schools currently is agriculture. Um, and I have heard of some smaller districts that have started to build that program where they've, they've been sustained for a long time. But the CSU extension already in the building, I think they're a worthwhile, um, entity to talk with. I don't know if CMC's appetite to sell their facility to another higher institution, I, I don't imagine it. Off the table by any means, but their extension work could operate possibly out of that location. That is, that is a, you know. I wonder, my question, but then, other than that, you don't know that you have the school district itself for the location.
Thank you.
Is it under a limited aid restriction and it has to be used for education?
Yes, it, the covenant should be read. I think that's the first priority. Is there, the first sale should. Or educational. Or service or something?
What would never be there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the priority. It says something about, second, let's wait. Sell it outside of that.
I have a quick question on the trades conversation, because that's one that comes up a lot for us as well. They're like. Um, so that being said. When you specifically talk about trades and enrollment, are you talking about those that are under eighteen or of all ages? I feel like a trade school for all ages is something that is also very much needed. We don't have access to anything for adults, and which CMC kind of offers, CSU kind of offers. But those that want to learn a trade have to drive somewhere to learn. So the conversation is. Have they been more, uh, for eighteen and under or all?
Okay, originally, they're coming to us for. Now, wouldn't students want to do this? But then you hear the next statement of, there's lots of people in the community who could be trained, but we don't have access to. So I think, I think we're the next place to come to say, we're in the school business and, yeah. What about?
Be nice if we could try and out there. So that's a very. So, that's a very, very inspiring. Also, if we ever get, uh, assisted living for older adults, um, you know, training their, their staff to. Uh, to understand, you know, basic medical law, online news. Those things would be really good.
A lot of the trades work is happening. Uh, so, in preschool, it happens at preschool. So I. There, there's definitely some coursework, but our, we're writing for our staff, they're doing coursework online. But, uh, you're writing for other.
Yeah, no, it'd be great, no.
Yeah, I'd love to, like, a little, okay, I'm more a HVAC specialist or basic repair, but that's not really your.
Thank you.
We, I mean, it sounds like we're on something off in the sales, but have we talked to, like, other community colleges about outpost? Kind of program, or is that even a goal we would have to, like, approach? Adam State or Buffalo about, hey, you know, we have this building. Potential for sale, would you be interested in a trade school here?
Yeah, we'd have to see, I've seen work, like, kind of discussions like that, but it sound like a good. Hey, just let the building go. But somebody has to keep it up, right?
Whoever runs it has to keep. So if this school were to buy it, would they lease it back out to another BOCs? Maybe.
Yeah. If that was.
Yeah.
Is there a price on the building?
I haven't really heard anything fresh from CMC, so. I know that did any contact, heard communication with several different groups, but I don't know, I haven't heard price.
Yeah, it's just, you know, definitely one of the things that, you know, Vista is lacking, is it, is it college?
We have a role in thinking through, I mean, it's obviously a private sale, if it's restricted. Does the town board have any? Coverage there?
Thank you. It feels like it could be a good opportunity to have as a space. Furthering education outside of. The typical route, right? So whether it's a trade school, a place for kids to be able to go learn new sports. It, a place for the community to gather and. It feels like it's worth keeping in conversation to make sure we don't lose that opportunity further down.
Do we have any drawings of that building? You have any drawings of that building? Yeah, rec center, we can put the pool right there in the middle.
There you go. So it's, it's on a big piece of property, so you could pull that back. Yeah. And you could learn pool maintenance.
Is it an insane idea to think about BOCs being based on the airport building? So much space there, the airport.
Couple, three offices would be.
Move that out of the way. Buy some dividers.
I can actually, we're getting in touch with you. Take a look. Because, yeah, it's going to be something we're going to be starting to look at really close, coming up in December. Planning and trying to figure out where we're going, so conversation might be worth talking. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it'd be good to just do some brainstorming about what, what, what could we do with that building? We should own it and. I'd just hate to see it go down, you know, just go commercial use. We'll see. Okay, anything else on CMC?
Thanks for the background, that's what. Thank you.
Um, so the last item that we have on our, um, discussion items has to do with water. Brian, this one is you.
That's correct. Um, I just want to, I mean, start with the same, I think, you know, getting to work together. Um, we see it as a good thing. Other organizations have a big impact, so taking an opportunity to get together. You know, a good thing. Things have gone pretty well so far overall, but you guys kind of, kind of, I'm pleased to see each other. So water discussion, um, this slideshow included in the back, and of course, screenshot, what comes. Um, each slide, if you're possible, talk about, we're going to hour, really long, but, uh. I don't, I don't like your background, the water, where it's, we talk, water, a lot. Uh, it's a lot. So, I wanted to get kind of a general background. Um, I have a little, very, I have a little, always fun to get together, come here, go here. Um, great here, there's a lot of people, I mean, that are interested, always do. Further discussion. Uh, so as far as kind of summary, it will jump, but it's all kind of trickles down to the last few slides. Uh, everything, uh, touches earlier slides, so, uh. As far as, like, do you water capacity, I know, you've at least heard of it, you know, nothing with it. Uh, and it's really, at the end of the day, twenty point one, a water resource master plan, what it really looks like. What does it look like, drought here, all the white drought? And we, why I'm wondering, so, that looks at all of our water rights, our right portfolios. If we doubt the ones that we call out, given here, i.e. if they're changing to water downstream. We're not going to rely on that, pipe water. Or else I'm going to rely on project water, which can, you know, go up the western slope. Uh, so being pretty conservative over there, you know, touch on that, really what, uh, drives a lot of your discussions. Um, effort towards maximizing our existing capacity as well, as well as what could be done to increase our best. Um, everybody can hear me, I don't want to get off the park. Um, so, down to that, uh, water concentration plan, which is currently going on. Um, it's in, it's kind of initial draft form, uh, with hope of having a final draft form. Uh, the end of this month, and then get into waters that. So starting with water resources master plan. This seems like a, this amount of information on that, a little fair, but this is, this is the critical number. This is what we utilize when we're calculating how much water we have, based on basically an X F P range. Water. And that's how we track it, that's how we measure it, how we, uh, kind of go about this. Been a higher level, um, as the municipality, we have a general government, uh, general fund. That's based off of taxes, tax revenue, but that's already, sales tax, uh, property tax. The water fund is, is potentially well created. Uh, what it does is, at kind of four, and then go to those, B, and the four, water enterprise. Uh, from the, I think that. That three forty seven again, it's just kind of. Big number to go for. And a lot of these slides are pulled directly from that water resource master plan in twenty twenty one. Um, this provides a breakdown, uh, where water is used. For, uh, you know, a graphical representation of it. Uh, now, for this reading, twenty twenty one, six point three percent for his school buildings. Uh, residential, of course, makes up a very big chunk of it, um, in different sectors. Uh, this again references, how do we, how do we identify how much we have? By, if you give a quantity, that's a, uh, number of houses or, uh. Uh, this again, you can see, I mean, this is a good example, um, where it takes out. Any droughtier conditions takes out a given rate, because it's, you're here to, for one year's. So based on that, CFS, maybe it's also unique that, I really have, at the end of the day, surface water. And then, uh, implement your, very good. Why I say that's unique is, if you're looking at, like, regular, for all the bigger feed operations. If you're in the world of bigger feed operations, how much we use over. Is our asset. Being these situations, more of that feed day demand. A feed day demand is, it's going to happen in the summer. Hot, it's dry, uh, people are trying to keep the gardens going, the lawn's garden, stuff like that, so. It is unique in the way that we're looking at how much water can be pulled in during feed day demand. So, that identifies that about twenty five hundred days of feed. Which I think. Feed day demand can happen in, in advance, if you, always. It depends on the year, uh, condition, no matter how much, how fast, uh, comes that out. Everything like that, so, well, again, I mean, we're not just saying, here's the number, and that's what we. There are efforts to make sure that we're utilizing our water. Uh, to store stewards of, uh, of decreasing force, while potentially, uh, increasing. So, one thing that's identified in the water investment, that I might have, uh, heard as far as nation system. Institution system, the pipeline underground, uh, are always going to have some level. Uh, that's whole service line, that, uh, base system, uh, that's access, you're breaks that. Identify that, especially in our, uh, soil conditions, very porous, uh, in Kansas, the climate breaks, you'll see it on the circuit. Uh, here, it'll infiltrate, now, um, sometimes you'll see it, uh, there's nothing, but never help. So finding them is difficult, they're six feet underground, vision very, and all of them. Probably, uh. Twenty, twenty one reporting, twenty twenty five, I know there are some, uh, assumptions as far as, uh. What the month differs, year to year differs, uh, but I think really what I wanted to show this, that gap, so. Basically pumped versus built, and you pulled this much into the system and you only built this much, and this is much. So, that gap there is your own account. You don't know where. So, the big thing is that has shrunk significantly, that gap. And as you can see, from twenty one to twenty twenty five, only has that gap shrunk, but also both amount pumped and enough. Uh, have reduced as well.
Yeah, but I noticed that, this is a very cool graph.
Yep.
Wanted to ask you why, why that is, because, you know, we hear people in, in the community all the time saying, there's no more water, we have to stop building houses. But it seems like our system's getting more efficient over time.
Yeah, so I mean, they on account, so I didn't buy, they can assist and, I probably worked around, number, not in the least. This might have, I feel weird, fifty gallons per minute, they, so fifty gallons per minute, nine, four, forty, add up a lot. So finding the least, but as far as the consumption. I would say with the growth, then leaking all the waters out. The heavy users are. The current development. That gets smaller, smaller lots, uh, maximize lot covers. Uh, what is landscaped is, uh, mineral, uh, they use vastly less water than large lots. And I think it just needs to be opened. New open drains. On day or time period, picture, uh, for the warm of it.
This makes more efficient.
Yeah. So, one of the highlights that, and a big shout out for ten percent. Ten percent of the system, as a minister, myself, can pretty well stop, like. With the next day, so, ten percent, that's right one. Uh, granted, I kind of bumped up to one or. But, we're headed in the right direction. Water treatment plan expansion, I want to highlight this, because, uh. You know, the water, watering schedule, watering restriction. Uh. It's, well, you know, all right, bad now, while we continue to grow, I mean, all of it. Well, there's two different things, bring water rights and just, just reach water, green water, two different. Water in the pipes, water that we have brakes. Greened water is the test point right now, for the reason that we got. The water treatment plant will, those two double. That pumping capacity, those two double the amount. Like there. It was initiated. In twenty twenty one, and that was after, for, for the upcoming. So twenty eighteen-ish, that's okay, what do we do? And twenty twenty one, this is what we want to, and we've been working towards. It's in the final development phase, uh, with the, it's a very significant. Think that it's like a, a simple wells, very, very down line. Uh, this is more before tunnel, twenty five, down, it's a well. Sheen that installed that. I didn't work here. But, is in the development stage where you need to basically flush out those pipes. The turbidity or the fogginess, the, uh, thin particles of water, it needs to give time to kind of really flush all that out. You're grabbing the sands and stuff like that, and it's just, we did not, this, so. Requested with everybody across the board. Um, there, hopefully, up those through the summer, next year. So, increasing distribution capacity. Like I said, there's two different parts of water, when you're looking at it, raw water, this is, thanks, right, this is what you see down the river, down the creek. Uh, that can be increased as well, uh, that chart, that show. Water rights, not just our existing water rights, but our, maybe they, the crazy water rights. It purchased five state of bed, a cold, very out of ditch, uh, pulled off just north. Of, jumping goes from three or four miles. Uh, down south to its third major, it's part of down there. We own the water, we don't, do not enter the land, um, to do, so it is a decree, it is had the right to be used for. We need some irrigation, we have to go to water court, change that. Uh, we're in the process of grass application. Water court is a long problem. Uh, it's probably a couple of years, uh, to be completely honest with it. Um, there's been some things of just negative, we're going to have a problem. As one, as a long game, try to get that, uh, three point C, eight CFS on company or any, there's, we need to swap, uh. Not initial, uh, plans to go right into water court, but then, then it keeps three point A CFS. We also intend on continuing relationships with the local places, places that exist in water rack. Uh, any partnerships, operations, for our, like, damn, project that's access to water, water source, uh, accessible water. And then, uh, the evaluation, door job. Door job continues, they flexibility of, that we're in the system, or it's, probably reservoir, concrete reservoir. So, when we need to, maybe, door court, placement of that water, soon. You can use it from. The reservoir's downstream, goes down. So pursuing those. Also, we're not just making it. Increasing capacity, the increase capacity. The board can tell we're very intentional. Utilize that water for. I didn't want to kind of highlight this. We're not just, it's not just to encourage development, but it's to have available water. In the water conservation plan. Water conservation plan, this lesson, like I said, is in, in progress. The, the final draft form will be hopefully done September. At which time it is available for. Through this conversation, urge you, it's out there. That has been ongoing since March of twenty twenty four. We discussed it a couple, couple of public meetings with board trustees. Uh, one, making you aware of it, and then, uh, two, I wanted to get into kind of. Identifying either pull from the presentation in February. As far as it highlights, I'm getting what I was saying, that feed day demand, that historical usage. At a point where it's almost three times. It's about three times forward. I worry about splintered winter. This shows our firm capacity at the group plan right here. Also, the trend. Here, the blue is inside. Red is what would be considered discretionary. Garden on. Wash apart. So it has that. That curve to it that is difficult year over year. Like I said, it can vary from, you know, just. Uh, alternate sometimes, but the curve will always be. So that is kind of system wide. This is the high school. The schools. Blue is in the house usage. And then the curve is. A bit steeper. So again, it gets very. Similar trend over the last. Recommendations for the water conservation plan, I think everyone would point out here. More aggressive tier rate. The discretionary water usage. One way that CWC state has identified a way to conserve water is to flatten the curve. We're not saying don't have. Uh, a lot, but as of very certain thresholds. Uh, being for, for service use. That is one of the recommendations. System wide of water conservation coordinator and water budgets. That kind of gets into the use of the high school. And this is the, the graph that shows what was originally proposed, originally approved. Circle the brand that forty six thousand a day. So this is kind of a lot. We approved it. Understood. Problem we're having is in twenty twenty three, when the forty six line was ninety five now. That's a big stretch. There's a kind of continuum through the slide, try to, try to put in. At ninety, and so that was all meters, ninety two is kind of your marks. Sixty five gallons. East of, uh, low, that's followed day. On the expense side of things, you know, gallons is one thing, the cost of the water itself. Again, kind of this. Different structure, so. Uh, yeah, that may be fifty eight thousand now. Friday started. The other thing is that. During that time period, uh, posted to eleven, eleven percent. All numbers on the right side, but I kind of want to show. Winter usage. I will tell you, in progress. It really beat down. Coming down, but can we, can we get it? More of the, more of the design. So. Back to the SFP, the third flag, any perspective that we get from. Was currently being used back to the design equates to a hundred and thirty three. Maybe the water output is possible, we're three fifty to four hundred. So this is. Water and then total current demand equates to. All that to kind of get into. Appreciate it. What I, what I. Really asking for some flanders coordination. Can't we, maybe this may have got a bit of, you know, agreement to kind of work together. Design, that's something, you know, what they, they were thinking. Instead of. We've got an engineer, we've got. Uh, we're then more than happy. So look at this system in general, part of the water out every minute. But it works and went through a nice. Read the meter, walked down in the red times, check the meter afterwards. Do that. I mean, it takes three per hour, but we thought it to go through and make sure it's, um, is accomplishing. So bigger than that, sure effective, you know, efficient water. Then that idea of. That committee is up and. And one that I threw out is essentially looking at running the irrigation pump and pulling it off. The system bleeding. I did this at my, at my time in Ponte for two of the biggest parks. One was surface water. Because it had an direct edge to it or adjacent to it. It's not unheard of, the school with the soccer field down south, kind of hybrid structure. Really, at the end of the day, having done it, it's not a hugely complicated task. It can, you know, really at the end of the day consists, you can, you can get sixty seven GPM, it may be out of the six. And by doing the six. We do our wells, we can ten inch, twelve inch, that's a big part of the region, Denver and stuff like that. Exponentially, but six inches is not that expensive. Uh, wellhouse, one in Ponte ran about fifteen, ran about twelve thousand. Uh, and then next to the existing irrigation system, the front. And with that, there are some considerations. Augmentation, that's where anybody. It's fine. I told him. They would be a player on augmentation, and we need to find whatever. Some of the considerations, but I, you know, like that, that well spacing, you have to be six hundred feet from another. Now, you don't have to be, if you're within six hundred feet, you just have to be away. Done that. This particular location, you guys have a well. So I don't, it's not. But the looks of it, and these things are always. I think maybe that's. Is, is drilled to a death. And, uh, got twenty gallons per minute. With residential wells, they don't really, they test up to fifteen points, so I guess I have to say we're good. Wow. So back there again, twenty two, twenty six feet is good, generally water for there. So Nav drilled it in nineteen fifty four, the school district bought. The property from Nav in nineteen sixty. Uh, it didn't include the. Together with all water. But, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, no. But there is one there, it proves there's a decent amount of water at that location. As far as spacing, again, you can find this spot six hundred feet where this one. And then second one, you gotta consider one where your existing bank or. Two, we also want to think about where, where it is tributary. I, are you drinking straw that's leading the cup with, or are you drinking on straw that's. Big difference, even where add on. So I'm not saying, actually, I'm just saying there are creative alternatives to evaluate. And if you have a. Now, I've got to create with other art. Very clear that.
I just have one clarifying question. Uh, the school usage, the irrigation, that includes baseball field as well?
That is right.
Thank you. So thank you. Thank you for doing. Really.
Do you have any words of wisdom for us? Yeah, just run up.
Okay.
Stretch your legs.
A few thoughts, I guess. Yeah, I talked with Brian, and then I had a call from Brett, which was kind of synchronous. He was having some similar thoughts apparently.
This is not a complicated. The puzzle that last month, I think could basically well, it's true, the territory of the earth is. And, you know, looking at at least, you know, Brian talked about the. Kind of the calculated demand or the closed demand. Action's about double, there is a discrepancy. Give you a round, and I ran, I kind of looked at it. Ground truth, it looked like a round six. Irrigated and, and, uh. Yeah, that, that ought to require about. Of the equivalent of what's. So similar, I can preach this more. By using the engineer in our organization. But looking at what the answer ought to be. There's no question in my mind, if we could augment, would have this capital. Get it set up. We can make an arrangement, it would be like our normal augmentation requirement. Do each other for a loss. Much more along the lines. Here ties it out, definitely. And that cost would be less than the numbers. Right now. So they don't have specifics on that, but I think outside of that capital cost, you can make this. Fair affection. Like Brian said, you know. Town district certainly would be working on water well all the time. I think there are about these. Just are basically moving yourself from potable system. This is not wild waters. From down the ground, you know, is a different dynamic and there are ones out there. Have any to, you know, curbs. As the town. You know, we're just here sort of, we're here to help, not here to tell people. Well, I think it's, you know, you saw that seasonal crunch, that, that's the real crush too, right? Your use is peaking when towns. So yeah, just looking at that. Brian said their plan going to more tier grade structure, they increased that number. Would be more, set it under, have some. You have questions or just want to get back.
I like the meeting conversation. We had. My thought about the whole thing, A, we can provide the water locally right there. And B, it doesn't have to go through the treatment system, so that can save you guys a lot of money as opposed to having water. Get that well number. Get that well permit number so I can follow up with the state, because if we can utilize that, that might be able to.
The only thing I would add to that for I guess is that. If that ends up.
I have a question. If this is a bit, you go ahead, are you trying to what? If you use that. Potentially all under that. A lot of language is written with some specific, there are specific items in our master plan. This was not in our master plan, even though Sean has been telling me for years. And he is so nice that he does it in such nice, lovely, healthy ways. And then Brian about the numbers and I was like. Uh, but Sean has been very nice at the time, so that was not on our master plan, but the. Uh, but Sean has been very nice at the time, so that was not on our master plan, but the.
In the big picture. If we take their irrigation demand off their system, that frees up two hundred and seventy SFEs. I mean, that's an overgeneralization, but it's, it's just, let's take that for example. What it would cost us to go find. New water rights and get it through water court to do two hundred and seventy houses, like this is pennies on the dollar. And I think the town has invested interest in. Being a very active partner with you, because it, it's a. It's a very cost-effective way for us to find more water. So I think if we can pursue some of these discussions and figure out how to partner with you, the capital cost is not that much, is what Brian stated. And as the town, we water our ball field with non-potable water to get that off the, off the system. So this is a very cheap way for us to find more water capacity and we'd like to partner with you.
Just a big shout out for him.
Yeah.
They're really nice considerations to seemingly solve a lot of problems. So.
Thank you to Brian for putting all the pieces together.
Like for us, the board. For the numbers were, they're secret. For the water. At some point, long road. We're eager to get into our conversations.
Yeah, whatever.
Andrew.
Another quick comment, the town engages on, engages water engineers on water issues about eight days a week. It's an expertise that we have in-house and stuff. And so that would not be something that we would say. Figured out and let us know if we can, we would like it all.
The water first, seeing them all the way.
Love that. I'm sure we don't have any promotion or nothing.
Not a real.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not.
The way I should, it's a, you still want to beg you to gamble for time. Hi, Chris, thanks. Yeah, yeah. I think that.